Thank you all for being patient and bearing with us. We're just a couple of minutes away from starting the meeting. I want to welcome you here tonight, and I'm going to invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Mike Lawson will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just pray and thank you for this other day you've given us. Lord, I thank you for the blessings you've given this city and its residents. And, Lord, just be with us tonight as we have some items before us and give us some guidance and direction. Lord, we just thank you for all the blessings that come without conditions, and we know that, and continue to thank you each and every day. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mike. All right, I'd like to again welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Wednesday, October 27, 2021, and we've got Debbie Pounders sitting in for our city clerk, and we're glad to have Debbie here. And I'll ask Debbie to start things off by calling the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson. Mike Overton. Mike Lawson.
Here.
Kevin Flores.
Here.
Okey dokey. Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Figueroa.
You practiced that?
I did. I didn't do it very well. And I'm sorry.
Wasn't here to hear.
I'm sorry. I'm glad he's not here.
Is that everybody? All right. Thank you all for being here. We do have a quorum. And Jeff, did you want to do something here?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion having to do with the agenda. Item number 11 is the Committee of the Whole, which is a resolution that was forwarded to the committee meeting regarding overturning or appeal from the Planning Commission. And since that continues to be an appeal request having to do with an item from the Planning Commission, I think it's more appropriate to have item number 11 come under the Planning Commission report, which would be item number nine. So I've moved to... My motion would be to move item number 11, the resolution at item number 11, to 9F.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to move item 11 up to item 9F. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, Debbie?
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores. Harriman.
Carry six zero.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are... We're now at item five on our agenda. This is the comments from our citizens, from our residents. This is the portion of each meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If you would like to address the council concerning an item tonight, we ask that you go to the microphone, please clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief. And anything that you bring forward during this portion of the meeting, the council will take no action on it tonight. The other agenda items you'll have... I'll always give you an opportunity to comment on those while the council's considering that item. So is there anyone that would like to address the council tonight considering an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item six, approval of minutes. Council, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented if there are no changes or additions.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Word item seven, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
May for A and B.
Okay, we've got a motion over here. I think he beat you for A and B. And a second. Okay, roll call, please, Debbie.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores. Flores. Thank you. Harriman.
Carry six zero.
All right. Thank you. Word item eight, quarterly economic development report. And I saw Scott come in, Scott Edmondson, with the Springdale Chamber. It's all yours, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I left each of you with a report for the third quarter on the economic development report, and I just please say that we're staying very busy. We're currently working with four companies on possible land purchases on industrial... on the Public Facilities Board industrial property. Our new job numbers, very strong. There were over 40,000 people employed in Springdale at the end of August, and that is an increase of 1,740 jobs since August of 2019 here in the city. Our unemployment rate as of August 31st was 2.7%, which was the third lowest in the state. Springdale was one of only four cities statewide that had an unemployment rate of less than 3%. Our sales tax receipts in September exceeded $1.7 million, which was an increase of 9.75% over September of 2020, and year-to-date receipts are up over 15% for over the first seven months of 2020. Then I want to let you know that Veronica Garcia, she has joined the Chamber staff. She's the new Director for Community Engagement and Inclusion, and Veronica is working closely with our Hispanic and Marshallese business community to help provide service and assess needs in that community. So we're glad to have Veronica as part of the Chamber team. The new and ongoing construction of the Arkansas Blue Cross Blue Shield Building located out on I-49 near Don Tyson Parkway. That said, ribbon cutting grand opening scheduled for that for 10 o'clock on November 3rd next week, so I hope you can join us for that. Just a couple of other new businesses to note. The All-American Steakhouse and Sports Theater, which was the former Western Sizlin Building, is now open. And then also Con Casos, which we've been waiting to come downtown. Con Casos is open here just across Turnbull Park from us, so I hope you have a chance to visit those restaurants. Get out of section, kind of reflecting back over 2021, what's occurred throughout the year, and not so much just for the quarter. Year-to-date, that's 75 commercial built... commercial permits issued and 207 residential permits, and each of those have totaled over $70 million in value, as reported from the clerk's office. Also, the UAMS Orthopedic and Sports Medicine Center announced that they were going to be building an $85 million complex out across from the ballpark. The Children's Center for Health and Wellness, adjacent to Arkansas Children's Northwest, is open. The Children's Safety Center will be located just south of our best ballpark, and they announced that $9 million has been raised toward their $12 million project. And then also, we've had three industrial property sales so far this year with Public Facilities Board property that can either help retain or create at least 100 new jobs here in Springdale. And then also, we were able to assist in obtaining an Economic Development Agency grant for the widening of Kendrick Avenue. So if there's anything... any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
One thing to add, and you may not be aware of this. I think it's just we got this number yesterday, but so we got our October numbers, and it's 15.88. Is that right? So another really good month in sales tax. So I think we're up about 13-something for the year, I think. Yeah, 13 and a half percent for the year, so.
Very good. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any questions for Scott? All right, thanks, buddy. All right. We will move now to our Planning Director, Patsy Christie, and the Planning Commission report and recommendations.
First item on the agenda is a request to rezone 3.45 acres located at 5324 Elma Springs Road. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to C5. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordnance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5 and declaring an emergency."
I'll make a motion that the ordinance pass.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions with the council? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this rezoning? All right, Debbie?
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Would emergency clause be adopted?
Powell made the motion.
Randall seconded.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman. Powell.
Yes.
About the ordinance emergency clause, carry six zero.
Again, the emergency clause was added because there's pending action on this piece of property. The next one is a review of a request for a conditional use for a Use Unit 41, which is an automobile sales in a C2 district located at 3360 North Thompson Avenue. This is a change in the dealership or the person who's operating that, so it had a previous conditional use for auto sales at this location, and since it's a new owner or new operator, it has to be a new conditional use. Planning Commission recommends approval of the conditional use. The title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving a Conditional Use for Yolana Svet... Svet... whatever at 3360 North Thompson," is set forth in ordinance number 4030, "with the condition that the same site plan for the previously approved conditional use and request was made for landscaping to be added to the site with approval." Landscaping was not shown on the site plan, but the new operator agreed to meet those conditions.
All other conditions stay the same?
All of them would be the same, yes. It's what we had previously. Yes.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes.
Harriman. Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carry six zero.
The next item is another conditional use for a Use Unit 41 automobile sales in a general commercial district C2 located at 855 Clayton Street. This is a location in which the automobiles will be stored inside for the most part. There is an existing automobile service at that location. Planning Commission recommends approval of this conditional use. Title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving a Conditional Use for Elevated Auto Spa at 855 Clayton Street," set forth in ordinance number 4030, "with the condition that the site plan needs to show adequate parking for the existing use in auto sales." They submitted a drawing that doesn't give us dimensions, so we don't know for sure how that, but we'll get a site plan that shows all of those have been adequately sized, and we know we have enough parking for it.
What does Clayton Street intersect?
It dead ends off of 412 going to the north.
And there's other commercial?
The whole area around there is commercial with a lot of mixed kind of uses, some light industrial, some other kinds of uses in the area. It's been there a long time.
So I don't understand what you're saying, that following condition was site plan needed to show adequate parking for existing use. What's the existing use?
The existing use is a repair shop at that location, and they're going to be selling out of that same repair shop. They have to have a separate business license to do automotive sales, and in a C2 zone, you have to have a conditional use in order for us to sign off on the business license for that. So we needed to make sure that there was adequate parking for the existing building and that in the case where some of them might be parked outside, we weren't taking up some of the existing parking spaces for the existing use for auto sales. They indicated to us that they would keep... most everything would be stored inside.
Yeah.
So we just want to make sure there's not a parking issue with a site plan that has dimensions on it.
You remember when we did something... help me out, where we were having problems with used car dealers stacking cars like three in a row, and some years ago, we passed a ordinance saying that you couldn't have more than two in a row.
Right.
For front, back.
They have to be able to be moved independently. You can't move and have to move another vehicle to be able...
Is that specific to any particular zone, or would that apply here?
That's any place.
That's any place.
Any place, yes. And if we have an issue or complaint, we usually call Neighborhood Services, and they go deal with them and, you know, get the cars moved. Or if we have to move forward with a conditional use that's got too many on the lot, that would be a reason that we would be bringing it back to you guys and to the Planning Commission.
Let the resolution pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Get it? Brian made the motion, and Randall seconded. Hard work, yeah, hard job.
It is.
I'll help you all I can if I don't mess it up.
You're too soft spoken.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman. Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Carry six zero.
Debbie, do you have the Planning Commission members trained better to speak louder?
Y'all need to speak into the mic loud.
She has mentioned that, and Brian will testify that. She knows... he knows that's what has to happen, right? Yeah.
Do we have too many? I thought with so many gone, we might be okay.
Okay. The next item is a request for a conditional use. It's a tandem lot located at 5962 West County Line Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this tandem lot. The title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving a Conditional Use for Barry and Stephanie Bryan at 5962 West County Line Road," is set forth in ordinance number 4030, "with the condition that they must provide a site plan." And I think we have everything we need for the site plan. There was a question about a septic system going into the driveway, and we got a letter concerning that today, so I think we've got everything taken care of that we need for that one.
I move the resolution pass. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Debbie?
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Carry six zero.
The next item is a request for a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in connection with a large-scale development plan that we have for an office warehouse at the intersection of Highway 112 and Marchant Road. The Planning Commission has reviewed this large-scale development plan, is recommending approval of a waiver of the street improvements. As you may know, there is plans by the Arkansas Highway Department to widen 112, and there is a roundabout to go with this location. I don't think all of the design has been settled yet, and we feel like as they would dedicate the right-of-way for the street improvements for 112 and for Marchant Road, and then the improvements would be done with the Highway Department improvements. So the Planning Commission is recommending that this be approved with a granting the waiver. The title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver of Street Improvements, Drainage, Curbs, Gutters, and Sidewalks," is set forth in ordinance number 3725, "for an office warehouse, Highway 112 and Marchant Road, in connection with L-29... 2129, a Large-Scale Development Plan."
So the improvements are the... are we waiving them for both 112 and Marchant Road?
Yes, sir, because the roundabout is right in that corner, and they will be doing improvements to the west along Marchant Road, and it's not real clear exactly how far that's going to go to pick up the drainage and all that needs to be done. That and all the frontage on 112 is included in that Highway Department.
The whole way.
Project, yes.
Entirely.
Yep.
So we really don't know yet how much of Marchant, if any, won't be improved?
It may be the full depth of this property. We're not sure yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just not sure because the design is not far enough along. The concepts are out there. They haven't done all of the rest of the work yet, so it seems a little early to start making somebody do improvements to it when we don't know what's going to happen.
I'll make a motion. The resolution pass.
With option one?
Oh, yes, with option one.
Okay.
Second. Okay, we have a mo... Sorry. Thank... Yes. It's a ways.
It's quite a ways because it goes down past where the old Marchant Arena was, so we're another half a mile probably past Ecclesia, so it goes quite a distance down through there.
Right. All right. Any other questions or comments? We do have a motion and a second to approve.
Did you say that this property owner was going to donate the right-of-way?
Yes, we would get the dedication of the right-of-way for both sides, which is a really big help when we start talking about widening out the highway and doing those improvements and what's needed for that roundabout. That's our trade-off. We're not having to purchase that for them not having to do some improvements. Yep.
Okay, any other comments? Anyone? Okay, Debbie?
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Carry six zero.
And then the next item was the item that was just moved to this portion of the agenda. It is a resolution overturning the Planning Commission's denial of a conditional use for a Use Unit for Cultural, Recreational, and Health Facilities Campground in an SF2 low-to-medium-density single-family residential district and approving the conditional use at 1815 Bitter Lane for Brothers Rental LLC and Talbot Properties LLC, is set forth in ordinance number 4030. It has the following conditions. It would be limited to a two-camper van RV site only, 26-foot maximum length camper with a four-person maximum per vehicle, no public campsites. The operation plan would be as follows: to rent two camper van spots on a regular basis for no more than five continuous nights, four people max per vehicle; to use an online platform for booking such as hipcamp.com or explorereden.com that holds guests and hosts to certain standards, requires the guest to accommodate rules, to acknowledge rules set by the host prior to booking and state check-in and checkout procedures; the rules of acknowledgement on the platform to include van campers, RVs, 26-foot maximum in length, no trailers, no tent sites, primitive site and has no resident restroom facilities; any toilet activity must be done in van camper vehicle RV or in guest-owned portable toilet, and waste must be packed out; no dumping of any waste materials allowed on the site; no dumpster onsite, and all trash must be packed out; one approved fire pit, and guests must agree to check the following websites and make sure there are no burn bands in either Benton or Washington County prior to lighting any fire, and it gives the website. Fire must be contained within the fire pit, and guests shall attempt to keep the flame at two feet or lower. Guests will agree to use provided wood only or wood pieces no longer than two feet. Guests may only gather dead wood that is onsite and on the ground, and must stay within the boundaries of the camp property. A fire extinguisher and rain barrel with hose are located at the metal barn 17 feet south of the fire pit. Acknowledgement to avoid private property by staying on Fitzgerald Mountain Trails or within Fitzgerald Mountain camp boundaries. Boundaries are marked by Bitter Lane and Goat Farm fence to the north, fence to the south, and signs on Butterfield Trail. Acknowledgement that the site is located in the city limits of Springdale, and no persons is authorized for the use of any sound devices that produces a loud and raucous noise or in violation of city ordinance or violates any other city ordinances. Required signage delineating the boundaries of the site and safety information; onsite signs delineating arrival to the property via Bitter Lane; onsite tags that must be filled out with reservation, name, date, and be posted onsite; onsite designating... onsite signs designating the north and south edges of the property at Butterfield Trail; onsite signs at the fire pit reiterating safety instructions and alerting guests to location of the fire extinguisher and the rain barrel and hose; and onsite signs, no dumping of any waste material allowed on the site.
Thank you, Patsy. All right, we've discussed this a few times, and I know there are probably people here that I'm sure that would like to weigh in also. We could either entertain a motion first, if y'all are ready for that, or we could open it up for discussion first. Anybody want to discuss? Anybody have anything? Yes, ma'am, if you please go to the mic, state your name, please.
My name is Ramona Latham, and I live at 1840 Dodd. I sent a letter stating a few more things that had come up to each one of the councilmen except for Amelia, because I know she's related to Zach, so I didn't send her one.
I don't think I got that either, did I?
No, I didn't send you one.
Okay.
I didn't have your email address.
Okay.
Sorry. But really, this is my last ditch effort. But actually, I promised Shirley, my next north neighbor, Shirley Harder, she's at 1800 Dodd Avenue. She's 88 years old, and she didn't want to come out tonight, but I promised her that I'd read her little letter. She says, "We've lived here for 50 years. Our property on the north joins the Brothers' property. The middle and north part of our land is part of a meadow area where the best building sites have the natural beauty of their property." They live just west of us. So anyway, she said if we should decide to build there, it would be an unsightly view of the RV park. She's very concerned about the wildlife. They're naturalists, and they don't like cutting trees. They don't like the wildlife to be disturbed, and we have lots of natural wildlife, wild turkeys, deer, such bunnies, all kinds of natural wildlife, bear. So anyway, she's concerned about that because she feels like the RV park will take away the natural beauty of the trails in the surrounding area and bring down also the value of our residential properties. She said her husband is a disabled veteran and said that you would ruin our property. And of course, she said that she feels like the rest of what we've already discussed of us neighbors. So... and I am concerned also about the... I know we only have two campers allowed with four people in them, but it doesn't say anything about friends coming to... also to join them, where were they going to park, and that kind of thing. I mentioned that in my letter that I sent out to each individual commissioner or councilman. So... but I thank you for listening all these weeks about all this. I appreciate it, and thank you for making some changes, and I hope you vote against it.
Thank you, Ramona. Someone else? Counsel, I believe it's to you.
Well, I want to thank the people who live in that area for coming in and having dialogue with us and having dialogue with Zach. That's really refreshing, and I really, really appreciate that very much. I also saw a peacock out there today, so that's another part of the wildlife. So I don't know where that came from, but it was pretty, so. I'm going to... I'm going to move this resolution pass. Was that a... Kevin, was that a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Powell and a second by Mr. Flores. Any other comments or questions for anyone? Okay, Debbie?
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
No.
Powell.
Yes.
Carry's five one.
Okay, so this was... this basically... this approves the conditional use. Is there a time? It's a resolution, or is it? Is it a...
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution, okay. It's a resolution, okay, so. All right.
And Zach, please understand, it's a good, it's a conditional use. And so, and I know we have good neighbors out there, and I know they have your number. And if things get, if things get, you know, out of hand, I, I know that they're gonna wanna talk to you and just say, hey, but just remember, this is a conditional use. Yep.
Thank you all. All right, uh, we move on to item ten, the Finance Committee. Uh, Chairman Jeff Watson, Jeff?
Well, Mayor, I was not at that committee meeting, and I think Amelia led the—
I did. Uh-huh, and I'll continue, that'd be fine.
Okay. Go right ahead.
A Finance Committee will open. Uh, we met last week, uh, and we have eight items on the agenda. Um, ten A is a resolution that states a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with BKD, LLP, and Disaster Recovery Services LLC for accounting services associated with American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of Springdale, Arkansas, forwarded from the committee with recommendation for approval. Colby, do you have a presentation for this? Colby, Chief of Staff?
Uh, I can answer any questions if you have any. Um, it's the same information that we went over in committee. Um, you do have the contracts there in front of you. The reason there are two entities involved in this, BKD is the company that we have that does our audit every year, and you get those in your Dropbox. So they're very familiar with our finances. Uh, we felt comfortable to move forward with a professional services contract with BKD since they're so aware of our finances. Um, they do have to keep a bit of an arm's length because they do the audit. Uh, so they have a company that they work with hand-in-hand, uh, DRS, Disaster Recovery Services. Uh, these were the two companies that we felt most comfortable with after interviewing a lot of them. Um, as I said in the committee meeting, when, when you start seeing millions of dollars, uh, being sent to cities, all of a sudden you see a lot of quote-unquote consultants. Uh, so these were the ones we felt good with. So what we have before you is the two professional services agreements. Uh, as we stated in our committee meeting, we do have prices not to exceed in these contracts. And the first one is with BKD, and the amount is forty-nine thousand five hundred. We are very confident we won't get close to that number, especially through the end of the year. We feel like we have a really good grasp on what we're doing with ARPA funds, but we've been very patient in what direction to move forward in. If you don't use the money correctly, uh, and you're not compliant, then you do have to pay the money back to the federal government. So with our bond program that we have going on right now, with budget coming up, and we're already short-staffed in accounting, we felt like it was very important for us to have people that could keep, keep us out of the ditch. So this is, this is why we're proposing this to you. And then the other contract is, uh, with Disaster Recovery, and the price not to exceed is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I would estimate that we probably won't exceed probably forty thousand dollars. We just didn't want to have to keep coming back to you every time, so. That's what we have before you tonight.
Are there any questions or—
So, uh, sorry, I wasn't at that meeting. Both of these, I guess, contracts are through the end of this year?
Yes, that's correct.
So do we expect to be done by then?
No, we will not be done by then.
So we'll do a new contract?
Yeah, we'll probably bring a new contract. These can roll over into the next year. Um, but we may wanna assess what all we've used them for by the end of the year and then bring a new resolution to you in January.
And that's why, I think that's why we can, uh, feel pretty comfortable saying that we probably won't even get close to those, those maximums this year. Because we won't have that many projects to—
Keep track of.
Uh, to keep track of.
Yeah.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Can we have a motion and second, real call?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other comment or question? Make real call.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Carries six-zero.
Ten B, a resolution designated in portion of American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of Springdale, Arkansas, as lost revenue in accordance to the guidance provided by the United States Treasury, forwarded from committee to the, with, with recommendation for approval, presented by Colby Fulfer, Chief of Staff.
So as you're aware, the American Rescue Plan funding gave direct access to cities and counties with funding from the federal government. As we said, we've discussed this, there's very few opportunities for cities to receive federal funding back like this, and so we wanna make sure we do the most with it. One of the main categories, uh, that the US Treasury has allowed for is what we call lost revenue. In the first payment that we received from the federal government of ten million six hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars, uh, we've ran the calculation that's provided by the Treasury. We've worked with, uh, the Municipal League, and we've worked with BKD, uh, our auditors, to confirm that our calculations were correct. And the calculation for lost revenue, which is, is common in larger cities, but not so much with the smaller cities, uh, we calculated nine million two hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight, uh, of the ten point six million to be lost revenue. Uh, so what happens is when we designate it as lost revenue, that money cannot be sent over to our general fund. That's, uh, a common misconception that we've seen in our discussions with the Municipal League. That money will have to stay with the ARPA funds in a special designated account. What happens is of that nine million that we designate lost revenue, a lot of the restrictions are lifted. There's a lot more flexibility to be used. However, that doesn't mean that we can't use it for any of the other categories. This just makes it easier for a city to recoup their lost revenue and use those funds, uh, as, as they deem necessary.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Do we have any other comments or questions? Anyone? Yes, sir, please go to the mic. Give us your name and address and, uh, whatever comments you have. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sarah Moore. I'm actually a Fayetteville resident, um, but I'm, um, a portion of a group called Arkansas Justice Reform Coalition. And one of the things that we've been doing is actually going around to the communities across Washington County. And we spent time in Springdale, uh, talking to residents about their concerns around these rescue monies. Um, one of the hesitations I have, um, around, uh, taking this revenue loss is just in some of those restrictions that are held today. Um, right now, many residents are, are sharing with us a lot of their concerns around having direct household assistance. Um, you know, many folks struggling, you know, to do their rental and mortgage assistance, um, folks that are wanting small business relief, especially in our black and brown communities, um, saying, you know, especially, uh, you know, folks that, uh, didn't qualify for some of the loans that came out in the assistance previously. And so I understand that some of the restrictions lift, but what I, I really am hoping that the city council, um, will hold hands on is making sure that there is a formal conversation with the community on all of the needs, and all of the needs are vetted. Nine million dollars looks like a lot of money on its face value, but obviously it spins very quickly. And I know there are a lot of different projects, um, that are probably needing of this money. However, the treasury money was put down with the indication that the most impacted folks from the pandemic should have urgency in where this money goes. Food assistance, especially as I've sat down with some of your nonprofits here locally in Springdale, they are continuing to answer the call for that. They are struggling under the weight of that call. And so I, I, I really urge that there be a process and there be a formal way that there's, they're able to vet out the conversation of those different needs and some kind of application process put in place. Uh, the concern just being that this money could obviously be, be swept up in a one-time project. And so knowing that there's need across the board, across this community, and wanting to make sure that folks, especially that can't make it out, you know, those folks that have mobility issues or childcare issues or transportation issues, you know, driving in the rain and at night is very hard for folks. And so I'd urge you to communicate to the community in all the pockets and in every language possible, because this is, is a very diverse, um, area. And also, um, potentially going out into the community and not, not asking folks to come into this room. Um, and if, if they need to be in this room to potentially give them that online tool, uh, we've all gotten very familiar through the pandemic with, with, um, things like Zoom. And so giving people the ability to come and voice, um, where their concerns are, where they've had long-term impacts through different mediums would be, um, very appreciative in the community. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Follow, well, Samuel's going to the mic. Let me, uh, for those that don't know, I th—I think the only ARPA money we've committed so far, we may commit a little more tonight, uh, out of the lost revenue, but we've, we've, uh, committed eighty-seven thousand to the, uh, the pro—the program that the Northwest Council's using for, uh, antibody therapies, uh, vaccines, and, and, uh, advertising, you know, a PR campaign for the vaccines. We've also, um, you know, a lot of, a lot of what you've mentioned, Sarah, the food banks, we are, we, we get a substantial amount of money each year from CDBG program. We're a CDBG entitlement city. Uh, we usually get in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars. We are limited to how, how large a percentage we can use. Most of that goes to housing rehab, but, uh, which is also very important for our community. And, uh, but that that can go to, uh, nonprofits, we, we do, uh, we do support, uh, our, especially our food banks and some other, some other things. I'm just saying that I'm preaching to the choir, probably, but I want everybody to, I want everybody to hear that. And we will, uh, a-another issue with giving out ARPA money to, uh, you know, we will always work through nonprofits for that type of contribution because, but the, we have to be very confident with the people we work with that they can do the reporting that is required. Because if, if we give money to a nonprofit, if, if we give money to a resident or to a business, and that is not properly reported, the taxpayers of Springdale, the City of Springdale, has to pay that back. And we're not gonna get into that situation. So we're gonna have to be very careful. It's gonna take us a long time to spend this money. We don't have, we've got some large projects that may, and, and honestly, most of them we've talked about would be eligible for the regular ARPA funds, whether it was lost revenue or not. But we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna be very cautious, but it is important that we spend this money, and I hope the council agrees with this. And of course, they're gonna all make the ultimate decisions. But it's very important that we spend this money in the, in ways that impact our residents for the longest period of time and the most sustainable way. So, Colby?
And Mayor, to add to that, and I, I agree with, uh, Sarah's comments, uh, there are some things that we, we need to be aware of in the city. We've also been, uh, we've, the county had given us a substantial amount of money for rental assistance.
Right.
And we, I think we gave over a million dollars, and then it, it just slowed down. We'd advertised it through various, uh, avenues, and we weren't able to give all of it away. Uh, and so they actually turned some of that back to the county. So we are, we are doing things like that. And as the mayor said, we are giving quite a bit through CDBG funds. But the reporting requirement, um, is gonna be similar to CDBG reporting requirements. And there's oftentimes, and I think Patsy will attest to this, where once an entity finds out the reporting requirements, they withdraw, and, and it's not worth, as Mike Overton in spirit would say, the juice isn't worth the squeeze, to some of these, uh, entities. But they do pull away from that with that reporting requirement.
And, and to the, to, well, just second Patsy, but, but to the issue of how to, how to hear our residents, um, we have committee meetings every two weeks, and we advertise, and we do need to hear, and we do need to hear from our residents. And we have council members that, that, and my office, and those, those emails and those phone numbers are, are published, and we, we welcome any comment from residents about ideas. But we are going to be very, very careful about how we spend this money. So, I, I, it, this is, this is money, this is one-time money that we're not gonna see very often. And to the comment about what it was meant for, uh, it was meant for whatever the treasury rules say it was meant for. Uh, that's what determines what it was meant for. And so we will stay within the rules, and we will spend this money in ways that the council believes is best for the long-term well-being of our residents.
And I just wanna add, with the CDBG COVID money that we received before all this came in, all of that money went directly to organizations that had direct benefit to the people who need it. And we work really close with them to make sure that they understand the reporting requirements so that we don't get caught with that. But all of that money went directly to all of those organizations that we're just, we, you just talked about. And we try to keep in touch with those to see what their needs are as we look forward with our CDB jump, CDBG money in the future. So, you know, we, we are aware of those situations out there, too.
Sam?
My name is Samuel Rivera Lopez, uh, seven oh nine Oak Ridge Drive, right down on Powell Street. Damn, where do I begin? It's good, right? They're like, we give these monies to these organizations, but really, like, just as an individual, just as these organizations, everybody can, can say they're doing the right thing with it. My point is this, y'all have the resources to go out and speak into your communities. I mean, y'all represent us at the same time, like, it's hard standing here and being like the only brown person here, you know? It's, it's, it's like this all the time wherever I go. It's like that. And it's not like I'm playing a card, I'm just being realistic. I'm the only one in my community that really wants to come out here because, at the end of the day, most people work, and they ain't really trying to come to these meetings and feel like they're not being heard. Most of y'all can't speak Spanish. I might be wrong in that. Maybe like ten percent of y'all probably speak Spanish. But that's fine. My point is this, there's probably like forty thousand people out there in that community that speak Spanish, that have businesses that are operating, that operate in, in that perspective. I think those people really do need assistance. It's not like they're, they're, and I don't think they're being met with, with any. Like, it's like, I can, I believe none of what I hear and half of what I see, 'cause that's reality. You could tell me something, but until I see you doing it, I'm not gonna believe you. Like, that's just the reality of the situation that I live in the moment. This is— We saw, for example, in February, the trailer park that I live in, when the, when the freeze came through and busted the pipes, the gas lines broke, and just because it's private property could not, the city couldn't do anything about it. That was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace that by Black Hills Energy. That was somehow aggregated to all of our rent costs in that, in that place. There's families that worked the poultry plant that were affected by COVID that couldn't go to work, but couldn't, nobody do nothing about it. I had to go out on my own, find ways to give these people food, to find, you know, burners so that they could actually cook their food. That shouldn't be happening two miles from this, from this giant illustrious building. Like, that, that's— We live in, in America. And, and that's what happening? Like, we live in a third-world country, basically, is what you're telling me? Where, where residents can, can just basically be ignored, where there's a forty-million-dollar building standing right here. Like, to me, that, that's, I don't know. It's, I, it don't look right. And, and if you're telling me, like, who's BKD? Like, I ain't never heard of BKD. Like, somebody has to make this information digestible to everybody. If you want, if you want change, it has to be digestible. This information has to be— Y'all have to do more than just say you are doing the effort to bring it out there. I wanna see translations. I wanna see y'all knocking on doors. If y'all gonna spend this much money on this police stuff, y'all better be down knocking on doors, being like, yo, what can I do for you?
You better land, please land the plane.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, we have—
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carries six-zero.
All right, thank you.
Item C, a resolution to authorize hazard pay from the American Rescue Plan Act, lost revenue funds for police and fire department staff that have been and remain in direct contact with the public during the COVID-19 pandemic, forwarded from the committee with recommendation for approval, also presented by Colby Fulfer, Chief of Staff.
Counsel, as we discussed at the committee meeting, this is a resolution being brought forward from the mayor's office in a way to give payment, direct payment, to our police and fire deemed as hazard pay to those who were going out during the pandemic and continue to go out, even as we see different variants arise. The state of Arkansas had already given firemen, the paramedics and the EMS workers, two thousand dollars in 2020. And so the mayor's proposal was to match that with our officers who were out in the field and continue to work, and also to do a thousand dollars on top of that for those same police and firemen. And so what we're asking for is out of the lost revenue portion of nine point two million is to appropriate six hundred and seventy-five thousand, a price, an amount not to exceed six hundred and seventy-five thousand to eligible police and fire department staff that have been and remain in direct contact with the public during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Would the resolution pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll remind folks, too, that this would also be eligible under, this wouldn't have to be lost revenue. Premium pay is allowed, and we have other, many other cities and counties around that have done something similar. Any other comment or questions? Hey, Debbie?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carry six zero.
Okay, item D, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds to acquire a portion of land from the Lynetta M. Levins Trust for the Dixieland Road Project, Street Project, Apple Blossom to Wagon Wheel Road, project number one eight BPS one four, forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval, presented by Ernest Kate, City Attorney.
Thank you. As I mentioned at committee, this is actually an acquisition we've not filed condemnation on. It's the only remaining acquisition for the Dixieland Road Project. The property owner has requested an additional sum of fifty-two thousand, four hundred dollars for these easements. Our estimate was three hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred, that makes it an even four hundred thousand. I actually visited with the city's appraiser about this counteroffer, and she believes that this is reasonable. This is a rather large taking size-wise, and in essence, this would increase the per-square-foot value from a dollar ten a square foot to a dollar nineteen a square foot. So she believed that this additional sum was reasonable. I believe the committee forwarded with the recommendation for approval.
I move the resolution to be adopted.
Second.
You mean condemnation's total?
Yes.
We only have five or six that are still active at this time. As far as court cases that are pending, like I said, this one wasn't actually filed in court. We're trying to get this settled without having them to do so. So, I'll be happy to send you an updated spreadsheet.
Kevin, yeah, Kevin, this is the last acquisition needed for the Dixieland project.
And we don't have any cases pending on Dixieland either.
Would you send that out to Ernest?
Absolutely. I'll send it to the mayor's office.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry six zero.
Item ten E is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle a condemnation lawsuit wherein David Arthur and Sharon Arthur are defendants, forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval, presented by Ernest Kate, City Attorney.
Thank you. This is actually the last pending case that we have on the Fortieth Street Project, Falcon Road and Spring Creek Bridge, and the property owner's requesting an additional five thousand dollars in compensation, which in essence would constitute the property owner's cost of obtaining an appraisal, which the city would have to pay should this go to trial, and also the city's expert witness fee. So I believe, and I believe the committee believed that this was reasonable to settle this case.
Move the resolution forward.
Second.
Yeah, we've got a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions, anyone? Okay.
Harriman?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry six zero.
Item ten F, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a agreement to a railroad crossing easement agreement with the Arkansas and Missouri Railroad Company as part of the Maple Avenue Extension, project one eight BPS two, forwarded from committee with the recommendation for approval, presented by Ernest Kate, City Attorney.
Thank you. This is something we've been working on for quite some time. As everyone probably knows, the Maple Street Crossing, railroad crossing, the new crossing has been completed for some time. We've been working with the railroad, and I appreciate the efforts that they've shown in coming up with an agreement that's attached, which is an addendum to our previous agreement with the railroad that in essence would remove the requirement that was initially agreed upon in 2019 of an insurance policy for that crossing. And it would instead provide for improvements to existing crossings that certainly benefit all of our residents. And this would allow the mayor to execute the addendum to the agreement, would allow the Maple Street Crossing to open, which I know the public has been anxious for, and the fire department's been anxious for. And also, it would provide for the closing of the crossing at the Cottle Street Railroad Crossing. We would provide, if this passes, we would provide, we wouldn't do this immediately. We would provide the public notice, we would post notice at the crossing that it is going to be closing, to get the public, the couple of weeks notice that it was going to be closed. And when that's closed, then Maple Street would be open.
And you said there would be a date attached on those notices?
Yes, it would, I think we're thinking Friday, November twelfth is what we're thinking would be. Two weeks would technically be, tomorrow would be Veterans Day, but that's a holiday. So we'll make it the next day, and that way we can get public works that signs up so the public can be made aware that that crossing's going to be closed and that Maple's going to be open.
Thank you.
Simultaneously.
Hey, Ernest, I know you just said this, but I had trouble hearing it. What kind of protocols are we going to take to give notice to the citizen? And the residents of those neighborhoods regarding these closures again?
Well, there's going to be signage that'll be placed at the Cottle Street Crossing. We haven't worked out all the exact details, but it will be sufficient that the public will be made aware that that crossing will be closed effective November twelfth. And that the Maple Street Crossing will open November twelfth.
And so we are expecting increased coverage of Maple Avenue this closer?
Well, increased, well, yeah, because there's none now. So, yeah, it will increase, but.
Yes, going just through the inner neighborhood.
Right. Right, well, I would expect a lot of those, Kevin, would go to Sunset. But you're right, several will go to Maple. But it, we, you know, it was designed to handle it, and we'll, you know, we can deal if it becomes, and there's going to be, I do, I mentioned this earlier. I think there's going to be a lot of redevelopment of the infrastructure within that neighborhood in the future. So we'll, you know, we'll have to monitor that. That's a great point and something we need to keep an eye on. But if it becomes a problem, if the traffic count, or, you know, if we begin to have problems in the neighborhood, then we'll have to address that like we do with other neighborhoods. What is our default on?
Thirty, twenty-five, thirty?
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
It's designed as a low-volume street, I think estimated to be less than, I don't know what the count was, but it's a low-volume street as it was designed.
It's pretty short. You couldn't get up too often fast where you get the end of it.
As you know, we've got several crossings in the city that are stop signs only. So what we're doing is we're closing the crossing that's potentially dangerous and opening the safest one in the entire city, and then taking efforts to improve the safety of existing crossings.
I think, sorry to interrupt you, Kevin, but I think we need to pay some special attention to the safety at, if we do this, close Cottle, to the safety at Sunset. You know, that's always been a strange intersection and.
Yeah, our hope is, and we'll, as we begin to work with the railroad on possible improvements as part of this agreement, I think Sunset would be at the top of our list, and hopefully they'll, we'll be able to work with them.
Make some improvement there.
Yeah.
And as far as notification goes, will that also be on your social media page? I think that road closings and things like that are.
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll handle that, like road closings. And we'll have, as Ernest said, we'll have signage there, and we'll make sure people know.
And there's an app as well that is out there that you can download and get notifications that just road closures and implement with her.
And as far as the signage goes, we're ready. We can get this in Spanish in Marshall East. I know it's for a temporary sign. There are a lot of language on one side, but whatever we can do to clarify, especially for that neighborhood that's always Spanish.
I agree with that. Is there some way to do a generic wording on that that can be used in other locations?
Well, you know, we've got our own sign shop, and the cost of these things is minimal. So we can, James, we can work that out. Now, we'll have, sometimes, I mean, putting it in Spanish is no problem. Sometimes putting it into Marshall East takes a little more time, but we'll work to get that done. And certainly we can, yeah.
Because there's a lot to do for a temporary announcement for closing, but just follow the beings, what people know as a way to get in and out, at least in passing. You know, twenty years with no, I mean, with a slight change, probably the past twenty years there, but that's going to be a significant.
Right.
People driving habits over there.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point. We'll get that message out every way we can, the best we can, and as soon as we can. And hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to stick with that date, the day after Veterans Day, that Friday.
We don't have a motion yet, do we?
No, we do not.
I move the resolution to be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anybody in the audience need to speak to this one? All right, Debbie?
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Carry six zero.
Lost my spot here. Are we on G?
Yeah.
Okay. Item ten G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission pertaining to costs associated with the decommission and remediation of wastewater treatment facilities in the territory formerly known as Bevel Heights, and assuring the payment of said costs by the Springdale Water and Sewer Commission, forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval, and presented by, well, it says Heath Ward, but I don't see Heath.
Yes, my name is Rick Paul Verini. Unfortunately, Heath's not here this evening, so I'm going to help him out a little bit.
Thank you, Rick.
Not a problem. Before you, in your packet, you have a certain memorandum of understanding with the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. It sets forth the purpose, an introduction, puts certain criteria in place, as well as establishes certain dates and horizons for certain parts of the project to be brought forward. I believe Heath came to you at your committee meeting, but I'm here this evening to help you with any questions or comments you may have, help you understand that. What we're looking for is to execute that agreement, which will provide a loan in the amount of a little bit more than two million, as well as a million dollars in principal forgiveness, essentially free money. So with that, we need the mayor of the city of Springdale to execute that agreement. That's what this resolution is for. If you have any questions, I'm happy to help.
Rick, what is the timetable it's looking like to clean this area?
Well, as you may or may not know, both treatment plants have been decommissioned, and there is no environmental impact at those sites. Actually, they've dried up, they're looking pretty good. The wastewater flow from the former city of Bevel Heights has been taken to your treatment facilities, so there are no overflows, no situations like that. To directly get to your question, this is going to add time to the project. There are a lot of environmental things that need to be done. We have to do NEID, lots of red tape that's going to take. I suspect we're not going to be able to start construction until next summer sometime. We do have a long-eared Indiana bat that we have to be very careful of and make sure that we don't remove trees in the summer. So we won't start the actual line work until next fall, about now. So, and that project will take about a year or so.
Okay.
Two years.
You have questions or comments?
I move the resolution to be adopted.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask Debbie to call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Carry six zero.
Item ten H is a resolution designating and authorizing the mayor and executive director of Springdale Water Utilities to execute certain documents in connection with funding administered by the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. It was forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval, and is, again, presented by Rick.
Thank you very much. What you have before you is a resolution authorizing the executive director of the Springdale Water Utilities to execute certain documents. Due to the nature of the project and all the red tape, there's going to be pay estimates, certifications, a number of items that are going to require constant signatory execution, if you will. So in general, it just makes it a whole lot easier to get these projects going and get the payments flowing for that construction work. And with that document or resolution, we are asking for Mr. Ward to have signatory authority on that.
Move the resolution to pass. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carry six zero.
And with that, finance committee closes.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Item twelve, I'm going to turn over to our city attorney.
Thank you. This is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas, declaring an emergency. The addresses are twenty-four oh one Trudy and twelve oh nine Young Street.
Move ordinance pass.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Is there anyone here from either of those properties that need to speak before the council votes? Any questions for the council?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Move emergency clause to be adopted.
Second.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry six zero.
All right, item thirteen, any comments from council? City attorney?
No, sir.
All I've got to say is, Debbie, you did a great job. Thank you. And I have nothing else. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.